Father, thank you for this day. Lord, for the blessings of it. And we just ask God for discernment and wisdom as we make decisions that affects the students and employees of our system. And we just ask you to bless our effort, Father, as we put it forth. And we ask it in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. We will begin with roll call. Our computers are not working. They're down, so Ms. Gail will have to do it.
Sure.
For us, okay? Thank you. I'm ready, please.
Roger.
Yes.
Here.
Pritchmore.
Fields.
Here.
Heatherly.
Here.
James.
Here.
Lastly.
Lester.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Thank you. Our second item on the agenda is recognition of guests. And we have two presentations to make tonight. They were made at Jefferson High School two weeks ago, I guess. Ms. Fields, our representative from TSBA, is going to present to two board members their boardmanship. Ms. Lisa.
On behalf of TSBA, I would like to present two level awards. One goes to Crystal Pritchmore. She has achieved Level 2 in the Boardmanship Award. And Crystal is able to be with us tonight. She is a player, so I'll leave this for you all.
Okay, thank you.
And Level 3 achievement goes to Mr. Brent Lester.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Fields. Congratulations, Mr. Lester.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go to item. Oh, no, we're going to go on to Stephanie White. Recognize Stephanie White.
I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak before you tonight. My name is Stephanie White, and I serve as president of the Campbell County Education Association. I'm here tonight to submit to you a petition containing the signatures of Campbell County educators regarding collaborative conferencing. We in Campbell County are very fortunate to have gone through this process with the district in the past and already having an existing memorandum of understanding which was ratified this year. So why am I here before you tonight with another round of signatures requesting to start this process again? Well, the answer is quite simple. The law puts this burden on educators to obtain signatures every three years and to submit these signatures to you in the specific month of October. As this board knows, Tennessee law recognizes that a collaborative relationship between the board and its professional employees will assist in the establishment and maintenance of an educational climate and working environment that will attract and retain a highly qualified professional staff. Your recent ratification of our MOU affirms to educators in Campbell County that you value our work and our opinions. We appreciate the opportunity to collaborate on matters that are essential to attracting and retaining a highly qualified professional staff so that together we can achieve the highest possible educational standards in our school district. We respectfully submit this petition to you tonight to keep this process going because we are required to do so under the law. Finally, as the board knows, under the law, once this petition has been submitted to you, the board then has the duty to appoint an equal number of board members and professional employees to serve on a special question committee that will set up the conditions and particulars of conducting a confidential poll of all eligible professional employees. The confidential poll is about teachers, about whether they would like to engage in collaborative conferencing. As president of the Campbell County Education Association, I would be honored to accept an appointment to be on the special question committee if this board seeks this. Again, thank you for accepting this petition, and the Campbell County Education Association looks forward to working with you on proceeding with this report. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. White. Okay, we'll go on to item number three, the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Lester, have a second.
Second motion.
Okay. Mr. James, second motion. It consists of minutes of our two previous meetings, executive action, some school trips, and a few dilapidated items. Any other discussion for it? Okay, Gail, call the roll.
Roger.
Yes.
Burge.
Yes.
Fields.
Yes.
Heatherly.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, item four is approval of the regular agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the regular agenda?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Lester, second.
I'll second.
Lisa, second's the motion. Is there any discussion? Ms. Gail, call the roll, please.
Roger.
Yes.
Burge.
Yes.
Fields.
Yes.
Heatherly.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, thank you. Item number five is comments from the chair, which is me. Our next meeting will be on Election Day. Is that a problem for everyone, or would you prefer we change that or not?
I'd say we change it.
Okay.
I would think.
Okay. You want to wait until next week?
Whatever. If it works.
We'll be going to TSBA that week, end of that week. You can't do it on Thursday.
Yeah, the following week, just be fine.
Following week on Tuesday? Okay, thank you. I have committee assignments will be sent to you probably when Ms. Gail gets back tonight and gets her computer. I've made some committee assignments, and we're changing things a little bit. We're just going to try it. It may not work. I would prefer, if we have committee meetings, to have them before the regular board meeting, if we can, instead of you all having to come over and go to extra meetings before. If we can start some of them at 5:00 or 5:30, we'll try it and see if that will work or not. And then I have made some committees. We put the whole board on a couple of them. Like Josh is still the chair of our finance, but all board members are on it. Same thing with Jeffrey in the building committee. He'll chair it, and then everyone will be included on it. Before, we kind of limited some people, which you all could come to any of them, though. But we're going to try that, and we'll change it and see how it works. And if it doesn't work, we'll back up and change it again. Reminder that TSBA conference is November the 10th, 11th, and 12th. And so I think Gail will be needing to know soon how many are going to go in order to get rooms and make reservations for everyone. And hopefully, you'll be able to attend. It's always excellent meetings for us to go. So she'll be sending out an email, I'm sure, soon to find out for them, okay?
Mr. Wagner, are we going to go back to the winter schedule on the meetings at 5:00, or are we going to stay at 6:00?
That's fine with me.
Last year, we went during the winter months at 5:00.
What, did we do December, January, February?
Uh, I can't remember.
I think we did December, January, and February, and I don't know, we did March.
I think it was when the time changed.
Yes.
Would that be a problem?
Which is next month, isn't it?
Yeah. November.
So, okay, we'll change it. We'll have it at, try it at 5:00 then, and we'll move the meeting until the next week.
Would that be a problem to get to committee meetings at 4:00? It's not for me.
Yeah, well, that would make it.
Not for me, but some of you guys.
Well, our committee meetings may not work then during the winter months, am I right?
Well, we can leave it the same, but, I mean, it ought to be at 4:00.
Whatever you want to do, okay. Let's leave it there, and then if we see it's a problem, we'll change it, okay? Okay, so we're changing November, December, January, February. We will have, starting at board meetings, we'll begin at 5:00. Thank you. That's all I have. Okay, directors mustly report.
I'd like to say congratulations to Crystal Creek Moore on Level 2 Boardmanship, and congratulations to Brent on Level 3 Boardmanship. I appreciate all your hard work and all you do. I know how much you put into it, Brent. I'd like to report our enrollment. We're up by 128 students since last May. Our enrollment is currently at 5,026 students, not including pre-K students. Including our pre-K students, our enrollment is 5,334 students. So it's always good to see an increase in our enrollment. Glad to report that all buses have been running, and all routes are covered by individual drivers. So I know you all are happy to hear that, and things are working well with our buses. Building grounds and maintenance inspections have been completed for the first semester, and all sites are in good condition. The camera installation, camera system installation is still underway. That is expected to be completed at Campbell County High School around December. Our discipline data is looking very good this year. The discipline rate is dropping compared to last year. And also very happy to report that we currently have only one unfilled certified teaching position. That is a math position at Campbell County High School, which looks a lot different than things looked last year and at the beginning of the school year. So it has taken a while to get those filled, but I think when school began, we had 16 unfilled certified positions, and we're down to one. So that is all I have to report.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Fields. Item number seven, legislative report. Ms. Lisa, do you have anything from TSBA that you want to report? Just that we're having the conference.
The conference.
And if they can come, hopefully, out of it. Okay, we'll go to item number eight, which is recognize Jeff Marlowe, Director of Finance, which I guess Karen, Ms. Karen's in his place.
Yes.
In this package, we'll find two monthly financials, one for July 31st, and one for August 31st. I'll hold up the August 31 financials. The 141 General Purpose School Fund, cash with the trustee is $7,614,000. Revenues are at 9.9%. And expenditures, expenditures are at 14.8%. The 142 Special Projects Fund, cash with the trustee is $627,950. And the revenues and expenditures are at 33.4% for each of those. The 143 Fund, cash with the trustee is $2177,000. Revenues are at 14.6%. And expenditures are at 16.8%. Does anyone have any questions?
Do I have a motion to approve the monthly financials as presented?
Hello, somebody?
Okay, Mr. Morgan, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Miller, second motion. Any discussion? Call the roll, Ms. Gail.
Roger.
Yes.
Burge.
Yes.
Fields.
Yes.
Heatherly.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Item B, approve of budget amendments and resolution. In your packet, you will find nine resolutions, 10-1 through 10-9.
Do we have a pleasure, whether we want to take them all or take them individually? Okay, take them all, okay. Okay, do I have a motion to approve budget amendments, 1 through 9? Do I have, Mr. Miller? Do I have a second? Okay, Mr. Lester, second motion. Is there any discussions, or any of them you want specifically to go over? Looked like it was special ed, eser money, carryovers, and different things, wasn't it? Okay. Okay, Ms. Gail, call the roll then.
Roger.
Yes.
Burge.
Yes.
Fields.
Yes.
Heatherly.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Item C is review of bids, and there's nothing at this time. Item B requests every class deal, and there's nothing at this time on that. And item E is to request permission to accept the middle contract, and there's nothing on that. Goodbye.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Karen.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go to item nine, items for action. Number eight, consider approving resolution supporting our students and teachers by requesting the Tennessee General Assembly to amend TCA 49-6-3115 to allow school districts to make retention decision for third grade and for fourth grade students. Ms. Fields, you want to address this?
And you want me to read this entire? Okay. We've discussed this quite a bit over the last few weeks or last few months. It is also known as the third grade reading date. Any third grade student who scores below or approaching will be retained in third grade. They have to score on track or mastered in order to be able to be promoted to the fourth grade. There are some provisions in this law that you can attend summer school. There's different things you can do to prevent being retained, but it's, we oppose this. This is not good for our students, and this resolution is in support of linking that up to the local decision, so.
And do parents not have any input?
No. No, so I will read this resolution, and it's quite lengthy, and it explains everything in detail. The resolution supporting our students and teachers by requesting the Tennessee General Assembly to amend TCA 49-6-3115 to allow school districts to make retention decisions for third grade and fourth grade students. Whereas the Campbell County Board of Education is charged with governing the school district so that all students receive the best educational opportunities in order to graduate prepared to enter a post-secondary institution or the workforce. And whereas during its 2021 First Extraordinary Session, the Tennessee General Assembly adopted public chapter number one, now codified as TCA 49-6-3115, which provides in pertinent part that, beginning with the 2022-2023 school year, a student in third grade shall not be promoted to the next grade level unless the student is determined to be proficient in English language arts based on the student achieving a performing level rating of on track or mastered on the ELA portion of the student's most recent Tennessee comprehensive assessment program, the TCAP test. And where TCA 49-6-3115 provides that notwithstanding that aforementioned provision, a third grade student who is not proficient in ELA as determined by the student achieving a performance level rating of approaching on the ELA portion of the student's most recent TCAP test may be promoted if the student is an English language learner and has received less than two years of ELA instruction. B, if the student was previously retained in any of the grades K through 3. C, the student is retested before the beginning of the next school year and scores proficient in ELA. D, the student attends a learning loss bridge camp before the beginning of the upcoming school year, maintains a 90% attendance rate at the camp, and the student's performance on the post-test at the end of the learning loss bridge camp demonstrates adequate growth as determined by the Department of Education. Or, E, the student is assigned a tutor through the Tennessee Accelerating Literacy and Learning Corps to provide the student with tutoring services for the entirety of the upcoming school year based on tutoring requirements established by the Department of Education. And whereas TCA 49-6-3115 provides that a third grade student who is not proficient in ELA as determined by the student achieving a performance level rating of below on the ELA portion of the student's most recent TCAP test may be promoted if, A, the student is an English language learner and has received less than two years of ELA instruction; B, the student was previously retained in any of the grades K through 3; C, the student is retested before the beginning of the next school year and scores proficient in ELA; or D, the student attends a learning loss bridge camp before the beginning of the upcoming school year, maintains a 90% attendance rate at the camp, and is assigned a tutor through the Tennessee Accelerating Literacy and Learning Corps to provide the student with tutoring services for the entirety of the upcoming school year based on tutoring requirements established by the Department of Education. Whereas a student who is promoted to the fourth grade pursuant to this process must show adequate growth on the fourth grade ELA portion of the TCAP test as determined by the Department of Education before the student may be promoted to the fifth grade. And whereas, in states that have adopted legislation regarding the retention of third grade students, the educational outcomes for the students who have been retained have been mixed, with one reported negative outcome being that retention laws can have adverse effects on students with disabilities and at-risk students. And whereas, other than Tennessee, most, if not all, of the states that have adopted legislation regarding the retention of third grade students have included in that legislation a provision allowing school districts to promote students who were not proficient in ELA as measured by standardized state test, but yet showed progress based on school district data, demonstrating an understanding of ELA via alternative knowledge assessments. And whereas Tennessee's failure to afford school districts the discretion to make retention decisions based on all school district information on each student adversely and disproportionately affects students who, for many reasons, might not perform well on standardized tests, but yet demonstrate an understanding of ELA via alternative knowledge assessments. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Campbell County Board of Education urges the General Assembly to amend TCA 49-6-3115 to allow school districts to make retention decisions for third grade and fourth grade students based upon all school district information on each student.
Do we have a motion to send this resolution, to adopt it at our school?
Motion to approve.
Okay, Mr. Lester, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Heatherly. Now, is there any discussion? Is there any questions you'd like to ask Ms. Fields about it?
Will we be providing the camps for these students, so that will be like summer school?
Yes, and it is currently funded with eser.
Yes.
When that ends, that will be an unfunded mandate.
Okay, but it will be a mandate that they can, okay, good, yes.
Any other questions? Okay, Ms. Parks, call the roll.
Roger.
Yes.
Burge.
Yes.
Fields.
Yes.
Heatherly.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Okay, item for action 9B, consider approving eser 2 and eser 3 application for the 2022-23 school year. And we had an attachment with it, and I think Ms. Walden's here tonight to, if there's any questions that we need to have answered about it. I'm sure we're following all the guidelines that have been set down that you have to go by, because there's lots of them that you have to do. Yeah. Do we have a motion to approve this application?
I move.
Mr. Morgan, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, and Mr. James, any discussion, any other questions? Okay, Gail, call the roll.
Roger.
Yes.
Burge.
Yes.
Fields.
Yes.
Heatherly.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, thank you. Okay, item 9C, consider approving eser 2 and 3 relief spending plan. Do I have a motion that we approve this?
I move.
Mr. Morgan, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Fields. Now, is there any discussion, or any questions that you would like to ask? Ms. Walden, would you like to just give us a summary of what's in this plan?
The previous that you just voted on is just the budget with the carryover money from last year, which is a continuation of what Ms. Fields, the board, and everyone decided to spend money on. It's just a continuation after the fiscal year ended. The relief spending plan is a continuation that explains what we're spending on in categories, and that is to be updated every six months as a requirement for the grant, so that's why it's being voted on, and that will happen every six months until the money goes away.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Walden? Okay, Gail, call the roll, please.
Roger.
Yes.
Burge.
Yes.
Fields.
Yes.
Heatherly.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Item 9D, is discuss and take in necessary action regarding funding the greenhouse at Lefollette Middle School. And I think Mr. Miller may want to speak to this, he's the one had it placed on the agenda for us.
Just briefly, back in the early spring, Dr. Goins and Ms. Teague, she's here tonight, they reached out to me in my capacity as building chair to help this. They had got a grant through the 21st Century Program, and Ms. Teague had got a greenhouse several years ago, and we went down and looked, and it was in a box, and couldn't tell a lot about it. But through that process, we determined how big it was, and we had, maintenance has already put the concrete pad in up there. We're Sandy wanted it, and building trades agreed to build it, and they started on it. And that little greenhouse wasn't what we thought it was, and they're going to need something a little bit better. And I've looked around, I had some literature on one tonight. Lowe's has them, Tractor Spot has them. They're a lot better, bigger. The one they had, I couldn't even stand in it, and that wouldn't suffice for what kids need to do. So it's roughly going to be a 10-foot by 10-foot, and it'll have a 7-foot center, and it'll be enough to have two rows shelving in it, and they can actually grow stuff. The cost is anywhere from 900 to 1,900. It just depends on what you all decide you just want to buy. So what we're looking for is just to, I've talked to Ms. Fields about funding through Capital Outlay, is just to give her the leeway to work with Sandy to determine what they want between, you know, up to $2,000, and she's agreed to pay 500 from the school. Ms. Wilson has. So that's what we're looking for, is to give authorization to direct her to work with her, up to 2,000 out of Capital Outlay to purchase the greenhouse.
Do you want that in the form of a motion?
That's my motion, yeah.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second, Mr. James, any discussion now?
Is that big enough for what they need? Can I back to you?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Gail, call the roll, please.
Roger.
Yes.
Burge.
Yes.
Fields.
Yes.
Heatherly.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, item 9E, approved request of a formal investigation by the Tennessee Comptroller of the Treasury to review the internal controls of the Campbell County Finance Department. Okay, we had, this was placed on there after some careful thought in asking, I think Ms. Fields had contacted our attorney, Dale, in what wording we should do with this. As you know, we're trying to get our insurance changed over for our support staff beginning January 1st, to get them on a plan, the state plan, to make us all in compliance. I probably need a motion and a second before we even discuss any of it. Do I have a motion to approve this item?
I don't need that.
Okay, Mr. Heavely makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. James, now we can discuss.
What are we hoping to accomplish?
While we are, I guess, at this point, why are we now finding out and, you know, we're...
That we're not compliant?
That we're not, and these people have paid a lot of money. For a long time, they didn't have to pay, I think, so... And so they won't have to continue paying that money, so it's my thoughts on it, and that's my discussion of it.
Chairman.
Yes.
Just have a few, you know, I've been reading a lot of literature on this for days, and the one thing that I keep going back to is why? The question is why? I wish Mr. Marlowe was sitting here to answer these questions. It would solve a lot of problems if he would participate. But, you know, I reached out to Laurie Lee over the State of Tennessee Office of Finance today, and I wanted a copy of the MOU. I keep hearing about this MOU, you know, between us and the state. And, you know, I read through it, 12 pages, it's black and white, it's really easy to read. And, you know, on page 5 of 12, number 11, it says prohibition on other coverage. An LEA participating in a local education health insurance plan shall not, in bold print, shall not, offer, subsidize, or incentivize enrollment of individuals eligible for state-sponsored group insurance program into any other health plan. Now, if you read that, why would you offer another plan knowingly? That's my question. Because these people that this is affected, they don't make no money, okay, folks? I've had them call me saying that they're working for nothing, they pay their health insurance, they don't have no money left. So where's the good faith that you're operating in the faith of the employee? What's in the best interest of the employee? You know, if you know that you can move them to another plan and it's going to save them hundreds of dollars, why wouldn't you bring it to our attention? And not only that, the taxpayer of this county, I'm hearing it's $250,000 a year, and we've been cutting jobs, and, you know, I just don't... There's a lot of questions needs to be answered that's concerning this health insurance. Answering questions would solve a lot of problems. So, you know, I'm just looking out for the employee, it's my job, and I just feel like they've been wronged, and they deserve a better explanation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wants to speak to it? Okay, call the roll, Ms. Gail. Yes.
Burge.
Yes.
Fields.
Yes.
Heavely.
Yes.
James.
Heck, yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Miller.
What'd you say? Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Okay, thank you. Okay, then we go over for items for discussion. There's not any. Okay, discuss the legal matters. Mr. Dale.
I did have one that kind of follows along with what you all just discussed regarding your health insurance issue. The Director's asked me shortly after September 28th of this year to do an internal audit to kind of see what all had happened and where we had gotten to this point and what our options were. With the understanding that I do not have access to the county commission's internal emails or communications or to the Director of Finance's information that's handled through Joe Coker, I think I was able to piece together a pretty accurate timeline with assistance of Director Fields as to how you got here and what you needed to get out of here. A law was passed in 2010. That was a new law that affected public finances, and Richard Marlowe brought to the board's attention, and I believe the December meeting in 2010, a suggestion that the county, not the non-teachers, everybody except for the teacher, could move over to the county plan, and it could essentially save everyone some money. There was a motion made, a resolution was passed, but the county commission would not fund it. Some negotiations were back and forth that spring, I think, down to $35,000 at first, and by April of 2011, I think you all had agreed to split $100,000, you all paid $100,000 to the county commission back. In 2014, they knew the law was getting ready to change again, and at this point, the law that was anticipated, the judgment that did get changed, said that a school system could not. Everybody had to be on one policy, or the BEP would not fund any of the insurance premiums or anything for it. It was sort of made it an all or nothing. It took out the loophole that was created when the law was enacted in 2010, and I found emails going back and forth between Mr. Marlowe's office and the state as early as 2014 telling them that this was getting ready to occur and that the membrane that they had in place would not be workable under the new system. There was multiple communications that took place that were copied to Johnny Poston is how I was able to get through to them, because Johnny Poston, obviously, was the director of schools, and I have access to that information. Where I think the significant error occurred was essentially the spring of 2014. The state was pretty unequivocal by May the 10th of that year to Mr. Marlowe's office that your MOU could not withstand when the new law went into effect. I can't read it any other way, and in the letter, I actually quoted to you from some of the emails, so to chat that, I won't go over that again, because you have that in paper. On July 1st of 2015, the state law officially changed. So we didn't add a new law, but the existing law that had gone into effect in 2010 that was perfected in Mr. Marlowe's office was amended to say that it was all or nothing for lack of a better word. There were other changes that were in the law, but that was the substance. So this was not a new law that was corrected or created, it was a simple amendment of an existing law that had a direct effect on how you all did business. From that point forward, there is very little to know information that evolved in the school system. I could not find it, Director Fields could not find anything from July the 1st, 2015 until June the 6th of this year, so we're talking about seven years. Now I am assuming that there is information that may have gone back and forth between your all's director or the Director of Finance that did not follow your all, but we could not find any emails that were copied to the Director of Schools or to the Board of Education. On June the 6th, the county finance director received an email from the state basically saying that they had a question about a support staff that was all in that, and this is what started you on the path of where you are now. The finance office gets a question about a specific employee on June the 6th, wanting to know, and this employee apparently had retired, and they were wanting to know how they were able to receive retiree benefits when they were on the county plan versus the state plan. We don't hear anything else about this. Again, this, I don't know, you know, somehow this email got forwarded to our spokesperson, Director Field, she got copied on it, but it's the only reason that we knew about this. Then a concern was on September the 22nd of this year, there was a special call meeting of the Local Education Insurance Committee in Nashville at 1:00 PM that Mr. Marlowe attended, and it looks like the sole purpose of that meeting was to ask for an exemption for the Campbell County Board of Education to allow the policy to stay the way that it is. I look back through the records, and I do not see where you all authorized that to occur. I got a copy of this, Ms. Fields forwarded it to me when it was attached to a September 28th letter that was sent to Director Fields that basically outlined why this was inappropriate and gave us a drop deadline, December the 31st of 2022, to either, two options, transfer all employees off of the state plan to the county, including your teachers, or to bring all of the employees back under the state plan. Well, there's no way that your... And the teachers would have to vote for that, they cannot... You don't have the authority to force the teachers to go to the county plan. In my opinion, that is not a viable option, is that there's no way you're going to get a majority of the teachers to pay more for insurance and get less coverage. It would make no sense. But that was one of the two options that you were given. The second option was to bring all of your employees back under the state plan, which is going to have a cost. When this occurred in my home county, in Anderson County, we had to come up with about $900,000 back in 2016, 2017, because we just weren't made aware of it by our in-house financial director until the next budget cycle came through, and we just had to eat, I mean, there wasn't anything to do but to, if you're going to provide the insurance to eat it. We're obviously a much larger system, but it shouldn't have been called at the Director of Finance level. So two things had to occur. At your special call meeting, and I think, and I've been in negotiation or talks, I don't say negotiation, but talks, with the lady that represents the Department of Finance and Administration, their attorney, and then she has been in communication with the state's attorney, trying to get the correct verbiage on a resolution. What was suggested was, you wouldn't think this would be as hard as it is, but they wanted us to first, we had to vote to bring the employees back in, that we could not do the resolution until you all actually took action to say, "We will accept the employees back in." And that's what you did, and I think the meeting was last week, it was a special call meeting, and my understanding from the lady I was dealing with at the state was that they were going to have people available to answer questions about costs and procedures. They have agreed at the state level to provide us with personnel at no cost to help the transition. We have identified, we think, nine employees who have retired during this time that are no longer associated with the system that we would have to reach out to to bring right in, and the other number was less than 200, I think it was 115. So we... They've done a very good job at the state now of picking out where we go, and they said they would give us the resources to help the finance department to do the transfer over, so we don't have to worry about an open enrollment period. They're going to waive that as long as we get everybody converted over by December the 31st. That brings us to this resolution that I put in your packet. This went through probably 15 to 20 drafts. We would draft and meet the lady in front, the Department of Finance and Administration, they would send it all to the state, and they wanted a lot of verbiage changed because there was a question as to what the penalty would be if the state had the ability to assess you with a monetary penalty or not, because we are the only system in the state that did not switch over when the law changed. So this was a relatively new issue for them. They did not know about it until Mr. Marlowe made the meeting in September the 23rd. They voted unanimously to reject this proposal, saying that state law clearly prohibited it, and that's where they gave us the two options. So what we have now drafted is the second part of what you have to do, which is, and this is very difficult, you all are not in funding it. You have to request, you don't have money available to pay for this in the middle of a budget cycle, okay? Because you can't use undesignated funds, because this is a continuing cost that will go. Undesignated fund balance can only be used for one-time cost items. So you... This resolution is directing the county commission, I say directing, it's really requesting that the county commission step up and provide the funding, and it's requesting that the county finance director approve the provision of the funding. And that's where it gets a little sticky, because the county commission has the ability to say, "We want it funded." And since you all are under the Financial Management Act that you are under, the county finance director could in theory say, "I'm not going to fund it." And you reach this crossroads. It is my understanding, and I don't know this personally, but I've heard secondhand, that there is some disagreement between the county finance department as far as a willingness to participate in this process. I do not think you can do it without him or without that office, I don't want it to be appropriate to say him, but I think you have to have the coordination of the county commission and the county finance director in order to accomplish this. So I am here for questions. This resolution meets the requirements of the Department of Finance and Administration and has been approved by the state. And if the county commission and the Director of Finance will meet this request, everything will be fine, and in theory, what would happen is the county commission would provide money from some extra source, they would add that to your budget to, for this year, for this fiscal year, to pay that back, and then for the next fiscal year, you'd obviously budget in the additional cost that would go through going forward. One potential problem that has been raised is what about the employees that were opening for insurance during the period of time, probably from July 1st, 2017? Because the best that the people at the state and I could discern is that it looks like you were given a waiver until 2017 to get everything done. Now, they will not be definitive in that. I tried to get that into language, and all they would say is that they would consider that if it was brought before them, but it's such a new issue, nobody at the state wants to commit to anything. But the way I read it, you're, I think everybody's grandfather in that was under the old policy up until July 1st, 2017, so I think it really affects your new hires and retirees that go from July 1st, 2017 forward, but that's just my opinion at this stage. So all I can do is, given this resolution, I would request that you authorize the director and the chairman to sign it, and the director to deliver it to the chairman of the county commission and to the county finance director. You all need to be deciding what you're going to do if you get any... It will be catastrophic.
Will you read paragraph 3 of the resolution?
Yeah. If the Local Education Insurance Committee's December 31st, 2022 compliance deadline is not met, the State of Tennessee Department of Education reserves the right to withhold BEP payments for non-compliance to the extent it determines that to be appropriate. And that was the language we probably had the most... I did not want that language included in there.
How detrimental would that be to our...
Oh, my gosh, you're catastrophic.
Yes.
I mean, you all get a significant, I don't know, again, I can't ask anyone here, because you all remember your own financial director, but I would assume it would be over 100 toddlers, would it not?
I have no idea.
Where would this additional cost come from? We're already funding the non-certified employees, we're paying part of their...
You're paying part of their service through the county, and the county is paying the other...
Exactly.
All of that would have to come from the schools. It would have to come through the money that you're budgeted. So this year, if the county commission would just say, "The state determines how much it is," and they write that check... it is, and they write that check, then next year's budget cycle, you would have to factor in that total amount.
Well, my question, okay. So, what, I'm still unclear, if, if we start January 1st with a state program, but in our budget, we're funding non-certified employees from September through May, what, what, what is our ex, why are we owing extra money, other than just a difference in the premium? Is that all along?
Because, because as of January the 1st, you're right, the premium changes, and those employees no longer will be on the county role. That $100,000 that you are getting from the county is not going to be sufficient-
So, it's that difference?
It's, yes, it's higher to go on to the state premium. The reason is that when they changed this law, they wanted the state or the employees enter, uh, what we call contribution to their plan to go down, and the local education authorities' contribution to go up. So, whatever that difference is, is what the county commission would have to-
And we have no idea what that is, without the-
We won't until the state and the county finance director transfers every, because everybody's rating different, but some people are on individual plans, some people on family plans. What, my understanding is that, and the reason they give you this December 31st drop deadline is they will, by that time, you will know what the extra premium would be that would be paid to the state. And the county commission would in theory stroke a check that would pay that difference, and then starting July 1st next year, you all would budget in. That does not take into account if somebody that was paying extra during that period of time said, hey, wait a minute, this should have been changed over back in 2017, you know, that's an argument for a different day to, to, to deal with. But they would in theory have an argument that they have been having to overpay for something the state required you all to do, since you all were doing half of the employees, the teachers one way and the non-teachers the other way.
And they'd be right, I mean, there's no difference.
My feel is that they would be right, because the statute is clear. I mean, it's an all or nothing. And then that money, that money could come out of your undesigned reserve, because it would be a one-time payment back to these individuals. The easiest way would be to sit down and with all of them, figure out what the difference would be. And you're also talking about difference in copays, different, I mean, it's not just the premium difference, it's difference in their out-of-pockets, but that would be their responsibility to show, this is what my copays, my out-of-pockets were, and the difference, and then just do it all at one time. If I was going to do that and take that out of undesigned reserve.
But that's got to come from finance, too.
That would have to be approved. You all can request it, but the director of finance would have to approve.
And calculate.
The state, I think the state would actually help you calculate that. Based on what they have told me, they would provide the resources necessary to do the transfer. And while they're transferring, they would have access, because really all you're doing is going back to see what your premiums would be each year for that employee. But it is going to take a lot of work from the finance department to do it. You all just don't get to participate in it, which makes no sense. It's illogical.
Well, I think we should, personally, I think we should just plan on paying them back for they've overpaid, because they're the innocent, well-
They are being, I mean, they did no-
They are, they did nothing wrong. And we didn't either knowingly, but evidently we have. But that's my opinion. So, if, if for any reason, so we're, we're basically asking the county commissioner, write us a blank check, because we don't have much money we need yet, right? That's no good?
It's, yeah, I would say that amount will be determined, but there's also probably a savings component.
Exactly.
Over the, the next few years, you would save money, dude. That's why I can't, when I started delving into this, it makes no sense why it wasn't changed back over. I realize it would hurt for that one year, but I think over the course of five years, I was estimating it, and feels correct, if I'm wrong, it would be about a million five that the school would have saved.
About $300,000 a year, is what we're saying.
She said, the state said conservatively, $250,000 a year.
So, if you go back to 2017, you know, that's what, three, four, five years, that's 1.2 to 1.5 million, that you all would have had extra, that's where I don't see where there was any, nobody benefited from this. The employee did not benefit.
No.
The school didn't benefit, the county didn't benefit.
The insurance provider did.
They would not, I mean, there's, there are, it's a group plan, I mean, they don't, you know, it's pure numbers, they're just trying to get more premiums, so they don't benefit from doing it.
Back to the meeting with the insurance commission.
The September 20-
22nd. I had, I, you know, we got an email with a meeting to watch the meeting, and I watched it. And it appeared that, that they had the blessing of the board of education to go there and do that. I did not know nothing about this until the email, September 28th. So, how does an office from Campbell County go to a meeting and portray that the board of education wanted an action, when we never took no action? We never discussed this, not one time. But yet, they were going before a group of people, saying, oh, we want an exception. We want to stay like that. I never had that privilege to make that decision. No. I don't think the rest of them did.
Speaking off the cuff, with no research, with just the 30 plus years of experience, I think that there would have been nothing inappropriate for the county finance director to go on their own and say, I'm here as the county finance director for Campbell County, and we are asking that. I do think that unless you authorize them to act on your behalf, they call that an ultra-virus act, which means it's an act that's not capable by law. Well, it'd be no different than, you know, the sheriff saying, the Campbell County Board of Education told me to arrest this student, and nobody did, the sheriff just took him out on their own. Even though the finance department in theory works for you all, you know, they are, they do your budget, they do the things, they don't have the amount of authority to make any action. Like, say, if you wanted to, if they wanted to remove money from your undesigned reserve, they can't do that unless you authorize it. That's the, the checks in balance that you have. So, you could say, we don't want to use undesigned reserve for this, they can't touch it. But when you told me that, because I didn't see the meeting, I didn't know anything about this until-
Steve, he watched it.
If you all did not authorize them to go on your behalf, that would have been a misstatement and would have been inappropriate to represent that they were there on your behalf.
So, basically, what you're saying is, we're out of compliance, and it's pending on what the financing commission does to get us back into compliance?
If you don't get back into compliance on January the 1st, all of your teachers will be dropped from the state plan.
That won't be fun.
Repeat, tell the kids.
If, my understanding is, from the state, is that if you're not in compliance by January the 1st, then you, everybody's kicked out, that it's an all or nothing. So, if you're not going to, if they're not going to fund it, I don't know, and this, this is why I wish somebody in the finance state here, I don't know of another funding mechanism, this is not my area, Steve, you may know more than the rest of us on this, but I don't know of another funding source that you all have that would have the type of money to pay this, because all of your money is kind of here and gone, except for your, you know, undesigned fund balance, which can't be used for recurring expenditure, which this would become. I mean, do you know any other way that you could get the money?
We'd have to borrow it, but they'd have to authorize that, too.
Yeah.
So, they would not have health insurance? If, if they kick us off, then they would, they would be without health insurance? Is that basically what you're saying?
Unless the county, they probably, I don't know if the county commission could keep them off of their plan at that stage. This is, again, this has never happened before, but since the county commission took part of your employees, I think the teachers could make an argument where you've got to take us through, because you can't pick and choose, but technically, these aren't county employees, teachers are state employees.
And their premiums will be the same.
Oh, my gosh, yeah, and their coverage would be less, and that's why they're not going to vote for it. And, you know, if I were the county commission, I would say, why not do the cheaper way and let the school, I mean, it makes no sense not to let the schools do it, it helps everybody. Helps the teachers, the non-teachers, it helps you all, it helps the county, I mean, it saves money. So, I don't know why it would not be done, but the vibe I'm getting is that there's not going to be a lot of cooperation.
Well, I've been, you know, on the board a pretty good while, anytime you mention out of compliance, I don't care if it's in the sheriff's department, sanitation department, I mean, why, why is this a problem to get, I don't understand, what am I missing, why would we not want to get in compliance?
That we want to, that's why.
That's what, that was going to be my next question. Tell me as a board member what I need to do from my standpoint to, to make sure that we stay in, get in compliance, and that our employees are going to have their insurance. That's all I need to know.
You did, you did, at your special call meeting-
Okay.
-where you said, we will take them back. That was step one, that that happened. So, you have now announced to the county commission that we will accept all of these employees back on your state insurance rolls.
Okay.
The second thing is this resolution where you are now requesting that the county commission provide the additional funding needed to get you through this budgetary-
And they will have that at their next meeting?
They'll have it tonight, I'll give, I mean, yes, it'll, it's ready to go, Sharon has the original and her packet. And Sharon and Director Fields would sign it, and then deliver a copy also to the county finance director. And then the county finance director in theory should approve the county commission, let's assume the county commission says, we're good to go here, we're going to write you this check, and then the county finance director agrees to fund it, then we're in compliance. And then next budgetary cycle, you all will just factor in what premiums will be for everybody, and there's no consequence to anyone.
And getting back to what you said about the savings component, that's going to take a big part. It's not like they're going to have to stroke a big check, because there's going to be savings. Come back to the commission.
It's kind of like an energy efficiency program.
Right. So, we don't need to do anything else? Okay?
You've done, you will have done everything that you can do, and then just wait and see what the other two offices-
Now, let me ask, it was asked to me at the county commission meeting last night, if we had to do this to come into compliance, why am I even going to the county commission? So, can you explain?
They're the funding entity. You all don't have the power of the purse. So, you were given the money for this school year already, you don't have any additional money to pay for it. So, you've got to, to get them to give you more money. It'd be like if one of your schools caught on fire and burned down, and the insurance said, we're going to fight you all. The premium, the county commission in theory would step up, provide more money, and then get the premium, get the, the insurance proceeds. But you don't have the money, you can't get access to money, you know, the way that I know of. If the finance director has money, he may know the way to do it, but, but I don't know what would be the way. But I'm not the accountant, and I don't handle the finance.
Is it possible that there would be some money, that we could do a budget amendment in terms of that?
My assumption, I, I, my assumption was somebody would be here to answer that question, because if you had, let's say something, I mean, I'm sure you all are like our system, we always overbudget on certain areas and move money around, for sure, that would be available for people to do it, but it still has to be approved by the finance director and the finance director, if you all would vote to do it. Let's say you had 200,000 extra transfers.
Yeah.
And you say, we want to use that to pay this bill, county commission would have to pay any of that, but the county finance director would simply approve your appropriation to move it from one code to another code. But that's, they would have that information.
So, we'll have to determine what the additional premium will be, but also what will be saving over the next six months.
Yep.
Right? So, it could be neutral, I guess.
Yeah, it could be, it could be a wash, well, it's not going to be neutral, I want to take that back, because you're going to be out on the short term, because it's extra money that was coming, there's no mechanism for you to give money back to county commission.
No.
But next year, you may not have to ask for as much, because your premiums could potentially down. So, the county commission's kind of advancing that they will, could lower your budget in years and that.
But if we, if we knew what the real numbers were, maybe we could even budget, a budget amendment out of what we've got for insurance. I don't know.
I've got two quick questions.
Yes, sir.
Question number one, if the commission approves, can the Department of Finance legally decline?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Question number two is, what is the step-by-step process that we have to follow to get in-house finance? I'm over it.
You have voted, during my tenure on the board, I recall at least twice, that you all voted unanimously to hire an in-house finance director, and it was not funded. Johnny probably remembers the times that it was better than I am, but it just simply would not, they wouldn't fund it through your budget. So, you have voted to do it, but again, you get to the point, just because you voted to do it, that has to be approved by the county finance director. And the two times that I recall, it has probably been, Johnny, eight to 10 years, was the last one that it was done, and then once, originally, early on, when the Heatherly stuff was going on, and it just didn't get funded, the board voted to do it, and they just-
Yeah, we actually appropriated money for it.
Yeah.
Maybe, must still be in the voting.
So, with, now that they get the resolution signed, can this be presented to the commission at their next meeting?
Yes. And I will, I did want to say something, Steve, maybe think of something. We did, when I first came on to this position, it was overfunded, and I asked for them to leave the funding where it was, but reduce the pay that went to our, just because based on what we did for work or assistance, these being overpaid. And I asked that money to be put into a fund to pay if we ever had any out-of-pocket judgments or something, so that we wouldn't have to, to go to do it. And we never had to pay on a judgment in 20 years, and we've only, I don't think, you know, you figure, what's our terms of compensation? So, it's over 20, we probably have 100,000, I would think, that has been saved during my tenure that's been on here, that's not been used, but I don't know if it was transferred into another line.
I'm sure it's in-
It was supposed to be set in a fund to pay for any legal expenses that came up, or if we got sued for anything.
I bet it's just an undesigned fund balance. Would be my bet.
Now, I would have to request from finance what was in that line item. Are there any other questions for Mr. Cantrell?
You'll need a motion to vote on the resolution.
Okay. Do I have a?
I will make the motion.
Okay.
Saying we adopt the resolution as presented by Mr. Cantrell.
And Mr. Miller second?
She'll take it to the commission.
Okay, that's what I said.
Okay, that's for your motion, isn't it? Okay, and you agree with that? Okay. Any more discussion? Okay, call the roll, Ms. Gill.
Pryor?
Yes.
Burr?
Yes.
Fields?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Wester?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
We would just take, calculate that actual number. Do you know, and that would happen?
I think, based on my talk with the lady, that they're going to go back to July 1st, 2017, is the number for the people, they're going to give us, because the open enrollment period will close before we could get it in, that's where they gave us the-
Okay.
-until January 1st.
Okay.
So, we're okay as long as, and they, they told me if they get cooperation, they think it would be about a six to 10 week process. it'll be about a six to 10-week process.
Okay, thank you. Okay, item number 12, recognize school board members. Mr. Morgan, do you have anything else?
No, I've said nothing.
Okay. Mr. Miller?
I just want to briefly, I'm not going to get emotional, but I want to thank everybody for their thoughts on my mom, I lost her, and it's been hard, and if I seem a little off-kilter, just pardon me, I'm trying to learn how to live without her. Second, Valley View's having their carnival later this month, I think it's the 27th. We encourage everybody to, Benjamani, and thank you all for supporting Red House and following, it would be a good thing for them, and that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Heatherly? Don't have anything? Mr. Johnny? Okay, Mr. James?
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Wester? Okay, Ms. Fields?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Real quick, I would like to introduce our new executive director for our Bible Release Time education program, she's with us tonight, she's had to sit through this meeting. Mrs. Janet Henry, will you please stand up? We'd like to welcome her to the CLC.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And congratulations to, to Ms. Creakmore and Mr. Wester.
That's right, thank you, thank you. Okay, we have a motion to adjourn. Don't move, second, I'm sure we've got it, thank you.